All of those meetings are the community advisory, our policy board and operations board.
Absolutely. You have to mute your mute your computers, please. Sorry about that.
So each of the are entirely open to the public. Person in office will tune in if you got a live stream to support.
Welcome as well. And finally, what can we do as Delray folks really like promote renewable energy where our duty?
That is a great question. I'd love to get you in touch with Judy Young. She has all the details on those member agency programs for building reach codes, fleet electrification, the electrification of the charging infrastructure. And you know, it's just great to see the representative representatives here on the council. We have city manager, Dr. representing us and Mayor Scott Donaldson as well. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none. Well, Sophia, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm very proud to be part of receiving board and also to answer your question. We do meet quarterly, so the public is invited to participate in that as well. To learn more about not only the organization, but what we do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Sophia.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, our next item is the swearing in for new police officers on Gomez, which we're gonna have to postpone until his family members are available. Hopefully, we can do that next month. So I'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to pull from consent?
I have one question about February 90 minutes. I'm not sure it's appropriate that I'm asking. I misfoiled by a public person in the minutes.
Okay, I'll pull then item C1. Is that or A1?
Let's see, A1. A1, okay. Got it? Any others?
I'd like to pull C6, C9, and C10.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled? Seeing none. I would also like to pull item C6 or correction, C7. All right. So what I'd like to do besides those items. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone from the public that would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Back to the council. What I would like to do is besides items A1B, C6, C7, C9, and C10, I'll accept a motion to accept the consent. Second? Second? Okay. All in favor? Any others? Okay, motion passed. So we'll move on to the first item that was pulled, item A1B.
I'm not sure if I got the numbers right, but it's in public comments of the meeting of the ninth. Don Revers says that, where am I at here? That both Louise and I were opposed to four tag. I believe that we were opposed to measure B, but I won't speak to Louise. I won't speak. So I'm not opposed to four tag. And I want to correct the record on that. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Individually or how all discussions happen all of them? Okay, so I'll wait until the end after we discuss all the items. So the next one is item C6, which is the board appointments. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We had some version control issues, which were on my part. And so I just want to make some corrections so that it's clear because we have approved most of the appointments. We were waiting for Mr. Ragdell Cronin to join us so that we could appoint him to everything. But we mistakenly put for regen, we put an alternate. Council surely is, there is no alternate for that. So we're gonna take that one off. So you got off that one, Bill. And then on back page, our authorities number two, community human services. We had, council had already approved council member Howlett to be the primary on that. He's already the community services department at that. He's been attending. So Bill, you'll be the alternate. And those are all our
Okay, council member Shirley.
First, I want to thank the mayor for meaning seaside groundwater based water. So I'm thankful for that. I would like to note that I'd like to see if we can appoint Bill of the ultimate to the seaside groundwater based water experiment. And I would appreciate him being my backup. Um. In addition, I think that this is a good time to also mention that we have a planning commission with me since Bill's now on the council. And so that's going to do that application is due March 20. And so I was wondering too, we have some other planning commissioners that are going to be up soon after. I was wondering if we could maybe talk about when we're going to put those applications out.
First of all, for May?
Yeah, we put it out for part of May. Well, we can do it in
Because they're doing
Yeah, yeah, because they expire.
So we'll expect those out from the April?
Overall.
Okay, great.
I have another question.
And then and then at the last, I was at the last purpose and rep committee meeting. I know the one this month was canceled. But it was mentioned to add more members to the purpose and rep committee. And so I'm wondering when those applications are going to go out.
Right now, there are no additional member seats. So that's something that would have to come to the council.
So that's what they wanted, was that they wanted more more seats. So is that going to come to the council?
At some point, yeah. Yeah, I'm confused. I thought this proposal need to actually formalize these committees and create bylaws for them and how they're governed because that didn't happen when the committees were created. And so we've had problems with all of the committees. And so, yeah, that just takes staff work and staff time. And so, yeah, eventually.
Okay. Soon, they have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, and that's part of the discussion.
Okay. Um. And then I guess similar to that, maybe if this is along the same vein, is obviously the police advisory committee, those are going to be up in June too. So I just want those on the on the radar as well. So if we need just one big I've been talking about a lot of committees.
Right. So to answer your question, so obviously come before June because the police advisory committee doesn't exist.
Okay.
There is a deadline to get that done. That's seven members that we'll have to either replace or renew again.
Right, 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 right. Okay, yeah, those are things I just kind of wanted to throw out there for all of us to be thinking about.
The last
You answered my question.
Okay.
Okay, so it appears as though all of your questions have been answered or addressed inside the water master. Okay, so with that one, I'll ask council member Howlett, your thoughts on being the current alternate for that that board?
Which in particular?
The water board, the seaside groundwater basin water master.
Absolutely enthusiastic to accept the appointments and looking forward to being in service to the city. My only other question has been answered concerning community human services. Happy to represent the city in that capacity and otherwise nothing.
Okay, so your preference would be to stay the alternate on that on that particular board?
We're referring to community human services?
No, the water master.
Uh, I see, alluding to council member Shirley's wanting Mr. Ragdell Cronin, council member Ragdell Cronin to take my place. Quite frankly, council member Ragdell Cronin, just 31 years in the water business. I mean, I can't hold a candle to that. I honestly feel to give the best service to the city in that capacity. So. I can't hold a candle to that. I honestly feel to give best service to the city in that capacity. So.
Okay, so you'd be willing to make the change on as an alternate on that board position? Agreed? Yes. You got yours? Okay, I'm good. So we can make that change.
It'll even it out actually. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the boards and committees? Okay, we'll move to item C seven, which is the fire protection or prevention grant that's out there. I pulled that item because I just wanted to publicly show my appreciation for our public works director, Ron Fucci, who has included now on his resume, grant writer. That's still, he's been working this for a long time. And we're very hopeful that we'll get the money that we need to do some prior prevention measures mainly in the areas in between our city park and Via Verde and the area that is around Water Memorial Park. It'll be utilized throughout the city, but primarily in those areas. And I just can publicly thank Ron for everything that he does for that. So that was my only part in that that item. So we'll move on to item C nine. And that was pulled by council member Shirley.
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mayor Donaldson. So this was a an agenda item that council member Uli and myself added to the agenda. As people may know, I've been being trapped with water issues for many years on the peninsula. And I know in Mr. Dr. Uli's campaign, he talked about water rates for our repairs. And so we are now, this peninsula is faced with a situation where we have a public agency, we have two public agencies. Monterey One Water and Monterey Water Management District are ready to go on the expansion of your water. Which already gone through all the environmental review process. And and the only thing lacking is a signature from Calan for water purchase agreement. And if they were able to move forward with this expansion, potentially release us from the season, this is sort of from the state water resource board. And it'd be very beneficial for our region. And I know that there's other jurisdictions who would like to build affordable housing if they have water available. This could, this could solve that problem. And so I was already feeling frustration over the fact that we have, again, public agencies who I think of as as our agencies, who are now spinning their wheels, spending extra money trying to get this forward. And here we have a you know, a private entity, Calan, holding us back from that. And so last month, I attended the Monterey One Water meeting as a replacement for Mayor Donaldson. And it was brought up again that they are have potential to move out on over forty million dollars for the grants for this project. That the delay has already caused fourteen million dollars, you know, increase in the project. And so I I'm frustrated. And I have notes that says, letter from the council to the CPUC because the water management district is asking the Calprenium Public Utilities Commission to compel Calan to sign that water purchase agreement. So we can move forward on that. And I just, I just find that that's really, really important. Calan is saying no at this time because they want more money. They've already been given sixty-one million dollars for this project. So CPUC has already felt like they've given them enough money to complete the project and they still have time. So I thought it was important for our council to show support for our public agencies, which again, I think of them as us, right? When costs go up for public agencies, then that's costs that may eventually get to our rate pair. So I, I, you know, I'm looking out for the residents of Delray Oaks. These are, you know, these are our public agencies. So I worked with Johnny Lee to put together a letter and help them work. And so I appreciate, I'm looking forward to the discussion. I know that Mayor Donaldson, as a Monterey One representative, got some additional letters and we just got a renewed advice today. So I'm hopeful that we will have a letter that we can agree on, that we can send to the CPUC to ask them to have Calan sign the water purchase agreement.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so for all those reasons, I'm a member, I'm our city representative on the Monterey One Water Board. And this is something that we've been talking about for a while. And there was initial discussion on having the members of the Monterey One Water Board send one letter with all of our signatures, kind of a show of solidarity to be sent to CPUC. And then we also discussed the possibility of each member organization, each member city, sending their own letter. And what we have here is the benefit of a board discussion that took place last night at our latest M one W meeting, where we talked about sending those letters out. In addition to the discussion, the benefit of the discussion we had as board members, we also were able to consult with our attorneys who are very experienced in CPUC procedures. And they were able to kind of pull together a message that would most resonate with CPUC regarding those type of comments that we heard from council member Shirley. So after last night's meeting, the general manager and the M one W attorneys pulled together a revised copy of what that letter should look like. And that's what was presented to all the council members on the dais. We also have copies outside because it was not part of the original packet because it just happened earlier today. So that is something that M one W came up with that really has the same tone and tenor as the version that's in the packet. It's just that they feel, and I also feel, it will be more impactful. The latest letter that they proposed would be more impactful. So I think as a council, what we have to talk about is whether or not we want to send a letter and then what that letter should consist of. So I'll start off the discussion with, as a council, how do we feel about a letter being sent out to begin with? And I'll start with council member Ragdell. I suppose of course, any kind of letters. And also. Council member Howlett?
Yes, I support sending him a letter.
Okay, council member.
Same for me here.
Okay, good. So we're unanimous in the way that we feel about that. So what it comes down to is what the letter should consist of, not only what's physically in the letter, but you know, any modifications that we want to make so that it it's more specific to our city. So as mentioned by council member Shirley, there's a couple of draft letters that are in there. What I would like to do is get your thoughts on those particular letters and what's, what are in them and any implications you think would be necessary. And I'll start at the end once you think of council member Ragdell.
So I'm just going through the letter. I didn't read it last night. It seems like the letter that council person, Uli and Shirley put together seems a little more comprehensive. It's sort of the information shared. But it's, it's very much a repeat. The letters are very similar. And I don't, at this point, don't have any real preference on either side. I think either one would serve serve the purpose of letting the CPUC, you know, that Delray Oaks is behind pressuring or where do you use the?
Compelling.
Compelling, that's it. Compelling Calan to sign the board's order. Okay, council member Shirley?
I'll be honest, I was happy to see the revised letter because two things that were, that I feel are very important that were in the original one submitted in the agenda is is emphasizing the additional fourteen million dollars that's, that this delay is costing our public agencies. And also noting the potential for loss of grant funding. So I was happy that this revised letter made note of that. I kind of like the idea of sending a different letter, but if this one is vetted by M one, you know, lawyers, and they are in support of this. I think it contains the things that I find are important. And I have one other additional point in my letter, but I'm willing to give that up. So I, I would have to say I'm, I like this new revised. And we haven't talked before. I'd like to make sure it goes out to to multiple agencies when you set up. We can talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. Council member Howlett?
Mayor Donaldson, so I did report for the end of the draft letter. Thank you to council members, Shirley and Uli for taking your time to address these various seen and detailed oriented comments. I thought that the letter you wrote was just fine. To the point and compelling as it were. Gets the message across very clearly, urge CPUC to inform them that we back them entirely. Now seeing the revised letter for the first prime, as I would have suggested no edits, but since the author, or one of which has pointed out that even a few more detailed points were made here. And again, it was vetted by it has been vetted. I think that the revised edition or the version is most appropriate. One thing I am concerned with, is this the same format that each city that is sending such a compelling letter to the CPUC? Is this basically a carbon copy? Or is there something that should have, you know, a state Delray Oaks signature on it? For more effectiveness?
Yeah, we would have to modify it so that it's Delray Oaks specific.
Now, those would be my.
Okay. All right, thank you, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I'm really very happy and hopeful that I would be sending a letter to the CPUC regarding this issue. And looking at the three letters, they're very similar. And but of course, to me, how would I gonna choose one from the other? And so I'm, I'm just looking at the compassion of each of the letter. Kind of like the the letter that we drafted, because it's really like, at least in there are concerns clearly and very logical. To me, I always want things of our bullet points so that we can really like like if ever is the reader would be compelled with our plea for them to really like compel Calan to sign or participate in that. So I know that maybe we can put some like points that were in the revised letter, we can add it to the, to the one that we drafted, so that it's gonna be more complete and also very unique for Delray Oaks. Because of course, CPUC will be receiving a lot of letters. And if they're gonna see like a very similar letter, they might just, you know, skim it and not really like have that very emphatic volume. So if we can have a very logical and then presentation of our letter, that would be better. That's always a favor.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I would like to point out is in the revised letter, council member Shirley referred to it, but it's in the third paragraph where it specifically talks about the monies and the costs that are involved. The rest of the letter, there are some changes where some sentences were moved around paragraphs, but to different paragraphs, but essentially it is the same verbiage as what was in the original letter that was pulled together by Monterey One Water. So I just, I wanted to point that out. Okay, so what it sounds like, what I think I'm hearing is that we want kind of what's in the Monterey One Water letter, but to adjust it, add some from the other letter, maybe put some, some, some changes or like I said, take over some of the points that are made in the other letters and include them within the Monterey One Water letter. I, I think that's what I'm hearing that you would like to do, or just go with the revised Monterey One Water letter. One of those, that's kind of what I'm hearing. Either go with the revised letter or or go with something modified that takes a little bit from each. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion would be have the letter that we, council member Shirley and I drafted and then putting some that is in the revised, that is not available. Because the letter that we drafted, we drafted is contradictory. And then whatever points that we were not able to point out that are in this revised letter, we'll just gonna add it there.
Okay.
Yes, so that's probably a better way to do it. So, and that's the way my, my brain works.
Okay. I'll go with council member Howlett.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. Yeah, my comments would be practically synonymous with council member Uli. I would suggest the same that in maintaining the city specific and the signature of Delray Oaks, we use our authored letter by council members Uli and Shirley as the basis, as the format. And then the additional details, as you mentioned, the money, add those to it instead, to just to maintain the integrity of the message coming specifically, similar from other cities, but specifically our version written and hopefully received the same passion that it was authored by our council members.
Okay. And stealing the same.
That, that works for me. I'd like to hear what, what people would like to put in, right?
I just wanna, at this point, determine whether or not that's kind of the path we want to go there. Okay, good. So what we what we have here, either we spend time now talking about which things we need to put in there, or we consolidate the letters and then, you know, work on, work on it outside of the dais and then submit something. So which direction are we looking to go with that? Do we want to spend the time now? Do you know specifically what things you would like to take, add, subtract from the letters? Or is this something that we work on and then come back to it? So, yeah.
So I think time is of the essence for this letter. So unless council members know exactly what lines they want to move over to our letter, I, I think we either send one or the other, or we, you know, make a couple edits and then we approve it tonight. I think that's that would be my.
Okay, council member Uli, what do you think about that? And what specifically would you like to, to take from one of the other letters and add to the other?
For me, you see, the cost of the pre-order, the front of the standard estimated at fourteen million.
That's, that's for me, yeah, that's in our letter.
Yes. How about the grant?
That's also, that's one of my similar goal.
So I don't know if I have other things to put in.
Great, good, Mayor.
Okay, any other? Yes.
I think the last paragraph of this revised letter is is good. Wondering I, I think, don't think any of that information is in the letter that, that we wrote. So maybe we just take that last paragraph.
Okay, so you'd like to take out the, the last paragraph of the letter that begins, given these concerns and substitute the last paragraph of the other letter that says, we are aware of that commission?
Correct.
Okay. Any other additions or subtractions that you would like to make?
Not for me right now.
Okay. Is that, does that work for you, council member Uli?
Yes, yes. So I don't know if we can. Yes, yes, it would. So uh I don't know if we can. Have our all of our signatures on the letter, that would be the. That would be more really like emphatic.
Good. All right, so if I'm here and everyone will go with the the letter drafted by council members. Shirley and Louie. The last paragraph uh will change. In that we will substitute it for the last paragraph on the N one W letter. And we will add the signature blocks for all the council members. Okay, good. Okay. All right, any other discussion than on item C nine? Okay, now I'll move to item C ten, Councilmember Shirley.
Hey. Uh. Thank you. Um so I know that this item was reviewed by the planning commission, so thank you to the planning commission for that. Um and I see that Denise Duffy is here tonight, so thank you. Um let's see. On page um sorry. Uh page eighty-nine, uh it mentions that talking about the areas that need to be updated is traffic, water, and land use. But um in the excerpt uh attachment A, it's land use, circulation, and noise. So it's not water, so I'm that just needs to be edited. Um. You know, I'm reading through the, like if we look on page ninety-one, um. The under the noise element, we talk about. The airport, like in our general plan, we talk a lot about the airport. And so I just want to throw it out to the council that. In our general plan, again, we talk about we continue to work with the with the airport. Um I like to think of this as partners with the airport, obviously we share a place force, but I think it's important for us as a council. To continue to talk about how we can work with the airport. Um I know historically we haven't had the best relationship publicly. Um but our general plan really talks about um, you know, making sure we have a, you know, underwood buffer. And I'm gonna make sure that's maintained. Um we've got a lot of residents who I think are sometimes concerned about the airport. I I know it's been brought forward before, like an airport roundtable, just having an opportunity to come to the table. To talk about airport issues. We don't oftentimes, we don't get any updates on the airport. So um I I would just, I just I'm just taking this opportunity to, you know, again, in our general plan, we talk about working with the airport. If we need to invite the airport to a council meeting and have them present some of the things that they've been working on, so. And that's my little plug there. Um. I was hoping to moving on to the housing elements. I was hoping Denise Duffy would be able to give us maybe a little timeline. On um on when we can, when we plan to finish the fifth cycle elements. I know the sixth cycle is due the mid mid-December this year. Um I know there's some steps that need to happen and wondering if we can get any more information on that.
City manager, would you like to answer that? Okay. So we'll be scheduling a joint city council planning commission meeting for second week in March.
Yeah.
Depending on, well, we have to. Uh talk to everybody about their availabilities, so.
Okay.
But we're tentatively scheduled by March sixteen. Okay, that that would be.
Okay. And then um on the housing element policy B three, um utilizing section eight, housing choice vouchers. I know we weren't able to get to that in two thousand twenty-two, I'm wondering if.
Yes, you know. Get your crystal ball.
How am I got?
Denise, before you answer that question, are there any other questions? Maybe.
Denise Duffy, who have um I can talk for the city and work on the housing elements as well as any progress. Um to answer your question directly, the. The intent of the general plan and housing element progress report is to identify what you have accomplished in the last year. So. You know, to ask what's happening in the future is from outside the. The uh purpose of this, you uh need to report to say how have you as a city implemented these policies? And I think as a program, and I think as a general rule, we understand that the city is very small and has an element and the and the progress report says that. And so there's some difficulty in all of these programs and having the full funding and participation. So um carefully answer what's happening in um on the section eight housing. However, I do note that in the last time we had a discussion regarding the housing element, there was a member of the audience who identified that as a priority. And so both for fifth cycle and sixth cycle, we do discuss. Um I think actually more for sixth cycle, how we'd like to change or amend uh and reinforce policies, that would be a perfect time to.
Well, great.
And um and one other item will be uh commented by me on the chair of court, I think we can just amend that uh specific. Uh discussion status on will and city will endeavor or will strive to with the airport. Um again, it's what has happened in the past, and so I think that may um.
Okay. You're good. Any any other questions from the council or Denise before she sits down? Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Anything else for item six or C ten? No? Okay, at this point, I'll go out to the public if you have any comments regarding any of the items that were pulled. Which was item A one B, uh item C six, seven, nine, and ten. Your career, I I I can say thanks. This is really the the larger issue in the latter one. It's super um. We're both leading that, we all appreciate this stuff. How we get the same before, there's lots of uh other things that need to be done eventually, but this is something that needs to be done right now that's being held up and for. No good reason, and we need to keep pressure up and the way you guys have come together and the lack of you were moving. Uh and like we'll say thanks.
Uh Jim Clark, be a verdict. Um I'm a business owner, so I guess I look at this a fraction different. Than uh a lot of people do. Because as I read through the packet, it said, the following is an edited summary of the history of the Pier Water Monterey expansion project as told by David Stoll, general manager. And for me in the packet, that's the whole problem. Because we are only getting one side of the story. David Stoll's. Or we're only getting one side of the story, the Monterey Peninsula or M one Waters. From a business perspective, I've heard people talk about loss of grant funding for M one water. And if I don't get the initials right, please translate whatever that's supposed to be. Loss of fourteen million. But I have yet to hear, seen any research or have. In the packet, there was no presentation by CalM. Here's our side of the story. Nobody's talking about a loss of revenue to CalM. Nobody's thinking about if we go this, I can't say nobody's thinking about, I haven't heard discussion about it. If we go this route and we put it this way and we make the CPUC bend to our will. And they make CalM bend to their will, what jobs will be lost? How will that affect their employment? Okay, there's always two sides. I mean, we all have siblings and we know we go to their parents, there's one side of the story and there and most of us here have been married at one time. And we know all we do is listen to the one spouse. We only get one side of the story. But listen together, we can get a completely different side of the story. So as you're doing this. I know you're doing this with the best intentions. I hope you've sat back and looked up in the sky and thought about, okay. If we do this, what are the unintended consequences? Because we all know we have CalM people that work for CalM here in town. Will they still have a job in five years? Will they still be able to be property owners? Will they still be able to pay their property taxes that benefit us all? That's it. Thank you, thank you.
Any other public comment? I've seen none. I'll bring it back to the council. Any last comments on the items that have been pulled? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve items A one B, C six, C seven, nine, and ten.
To approve.
Second, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight, old business, there's none. Next item under new business. Item A, consider adoption of policy regarding use of electronic devices during city meetings, without a true notice of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh so this is something that's coming up. Uh at cities all around California, we come out of pandemic. And you know, during the pandemic, we were all sitting in our living rooms, um some of us in suits from the base stuff and sweatpants on the waist down. And and we got a little lax in how we comport our comport ourselves and conduct business and um. So uh this is something that's been discussed in a lot of different cities that had been dealt with in the past by some larger cities that have more resources. They're definitely kind of prominent, they more proactively and have bigger issues. Uh but it's something that's starting to affect us all, but I thought I'd bring this to you all consideration. Um I know personally from working with all of you closely. Uh we all have the best of intentions when we're up here. We're all very concerned about being transparent and working for the community in an open fashion. Uh so we don't want to do anything that's going to give any kind of perception that there might be backward deals, there might be backward discussions that public isn't uh privy to. Um and so sometimes when we have our personal devices up here, you know, we might be checking a text message from our spouses or family members or just. Checking a recipe. You know, I I never, but yeah. Uh but you don't want to give a perception that you're not paying attention to the public and that we're not doing business out in front of the public. And so perception is everything. Um you know, it's important for the public to be confident that we're doing things out in the open. And policies are a way uh of doing that and and for the the council as a whole, all agree that's gonna hold each other uh to these standards. I already know from working with all of you, you hold yourselves personally to these standards, but policies. Live on beyond all of us, and so it's just a reminder for everybody now forward that these are standards that we hold ourselves to. Um so what I've done is I've gone and I've asked uh some of my colleagues around the state to give us examples of what they have for policies for. Uh governing uh use of personal technology. Everybody can see we do have technology up here, everybody's using uh city issued computers. Uh primarily we use those so that we can stream the meetings so that we don't have to look all the way across the room to look at PowerPoint presentations that we. Some of us with older eyes can actually see the presentation being given, uh but also so we can follow with the agenda. You see the mayor's following the agenda on his laptop. Um but they're city issued computers, so we're not getting private email, we're not getting private text messages. Um and we just want the community to be clear that the business that's being done up here is being done properly and out in front of the community. And I know you all believe that. Uh so this is a policy, what I did is I kind of, this kind of case, it's not really complicated. It's just we all agree to keep our personal devices uh separate from this business up here. There's exceptions, obviously, because. Uh uh family ordinances and other issues do come up. And obviously, we wouldn't want to include somebody from getting a call from their spouse or their child or somebody in their family or something going on. Uh those are things that tend to occur, but you know, we want the community to be. Clear that we are conducting ourselves and conducting business up here appropriately and according to laws and regulations. Um ironically, the Brown Act is quiet on this issue, which is why we need a policy. Because the Brown Act doesn't govern the use of uh personal devices uh upon the dais because the Brown Act had been written in the seventies. We didn't have software on the Mac in the seventies, uh so that's why it's good to be proactive and do policies like that. And so the policy been in your packet, I know you all read it, and if you have any questions or you want to make qualifications, uh let me know.
All right, thank you. So uh I'll go first, the council member Rex, get thrown in for any comments or questions that you might have.
So I think this is a real good idea because during the pandemic, I went to a lot of different Zoom meetings and you would see people scrolling through their follow-up. Doing this, that, and what else. I mean, you really don't know what they're, they may be looking at recipes, they may be checking that their wife. I think if we're gonna be up here and we're gonna do cities business, let's use the city department, I think is the way we look at that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shirley.
Uh yeah, I think it's uh it's a good policy. I I need the due process portion explained to me, though, if um I like maybe an example. Uh the way I I read it is that, let's say, for example, uh we were hearing an appeal from the planning commission. And let's say before that meeting, I have a resident email me their opinion or their thoughts on it. Does that mean I have to publicly show those those interactions before the deliberation?
Yeah, so that's typically more of a land use thing for the due process and Alex, I've been on that, but yeah, typically if you're getting communications. Relative to something that you're going to be hearing in a public hearing, then yeah, it's your responsibility to share that communication, but.
Yeah, and the city can also contemplate uh crafting X R K rules, some restrictions, have X R K specifically that say, hey, you heard from anybody? On this side of the public meeting, please, please say as much in every Sunday morning, you discuss, I think that's what we do process. Uh the other consideration might be due process, you're up here, your quasi judicial role, taking evidence and things are, you know, hinging you. Um that may affect the decision as opposed to what's being presented to you in that certain intention, you've really got it, it's like a cardboard box. You fill it up with all the evidence at the hearing, things are coming from members of the public or that you're considering. Um then by definition, you're not just considering what what the applicant or what will become is is uh is presented.
Great. Okay, so you have the due process then is land use.
Quasi judicial hearings.
Okay.
Where you sit at the articular of a specific application or appeal to the city as opposed to a more broad uh legislative.
Okay.
Or what's like.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, nothing else. Councilmember Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. Uh no real comments, I've read the proposed policy, it's very thorough. And detailed and uh I'm all for it, I'm admitting it, consistent with my personal, I'm actually on beliefs and people in the process, and I'm continuing to be in the community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I agree with this policy uh because it can really like promote uh transparency, fairness, and. Humble shift in our government decision-making. And as I can analyze this, uh the effectiveness or the effectiveness of this policy would. Only depend on the implementation enforcement of of this, yeah, yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I completely agree for all the reasons that the the council just stated and as well as the city manager. And in addition to it, there's there's one additional added benefit is. You know, staff used to have to put together very large packets. And you would get a huge binder and it took a lot of time, a lot of resource to do that. And and with this, uh you no longer have that and it makes it a lot easier, so I I would just also offer that. But I I as well agree that we need to adopt this policy for all those reasons that are created. Okay, with that, um Alex, do we need a motion to adopt or is that a? Okay, but do we need a motion?
You need a motion to approve the the policy after all, right?
Okay, so I'll go out to the public, any further comments?
Good evening, where's Chuck? Rosita Rowe. I know perception is everything and when uh last meeting, when there was an opening. Uh on the council. Votes were going back and forth and a person was asked how they were gonna vote and they were staring at their computer. And it was almost like they were waiting for somebody to tell them how to vote. And I don't know if that was true or whether they were just thinking about which way should I go. But the perception was, are they waiting for somebody to tell me how to vote? And I don't know how to solve that problem other than when maybe there's a vote. Laptops get closed and so there are messages. So like I said, the perception for me was not very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the council, any further discussions on this item? Okay, I'll accept a motion to adopt the council's policy governing the use of electronic communication devices during public meetings. So moved by council member Ragsdale. Second by council member Howard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item. 9B, Brown Act will review and update. City manager. City attorney.
So you have in there in your packet a recent amendment from the city manager. And as I am frequently asked to do about once a year for the cities to review the Brown Act, which I have been practicing in, in the Brown Act for, for a decade at least. This is a frequent area of practice. Some of us are newer, some of us have heard me give this presentation so many times that they probably say good, I think Eric probably recited. But it is good to have the refresher, it is good to have things in your mind. And the, the, the point here tonight is to get to a place where if, if something comes across your, your phone or your email or whatever, it's just to raise the red flag to either to research it or to reach out to me. So without, I'll start on the, the first slide, please. And I, I am all, my paper ones here, Karen, if I could just go along there. I think it's a PDA that I sent over. I'm going to convert it in. As I, as I frequently, you know, with respect to the Brown Act and Public Record Act and the San Diego, 1234, conflicts of interest, I'm, I'm fond of saying sometimes that in fact, in the general rule of the Brown Act comes up from the Governor's Code, and that's all meetings of legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public. And all persons shall be permitted to attend any meetings of legislative body, local agency, such as, by the, next slide. So the Brown Act requires all meetings of a legislative body and local agency to be open and public. That is, you folks here in the council, that also applies to, for example, the planning commission or a committee such as the technical advisory committee. Next slide, please. Standing committees are also covered by the Brown Act. Meetings need to be noticed and agendaed and opened to the public. And there's usually two flavors of that. Something where a committee has the continuing subject matter jurisdiction over an aspect of the city business, perhaps a finding committee or another meeting is sort of fixed by some official action. A few years ago, when the city manager hiring process, that was an ad hoc committee. It was supposed to get it for very finite and definite task. That, those meetings, whenever I get a question saying, well, there's this committee and we have to, really have to look and see what, what, what the charge of the committee is and how it was created before we determine whether it's subject to government. Next slide. So who's covering? You all are covered. And those who were the minute they were appointed recently were covered. The minute they were left, it's covered by the Brown Act. Now, at least for the foreseeable future, we just have members of this body. Next slide, please. So the Brown Act requires that meetings of a local agency be open to the public. What is a meeting? It's a majority of the members at the same time and location, not necessarily in these chambers. To hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any items that are within the subject matters to the legislative body. That's why, for example, you have to think about this, not only when you're in chambers here, but if you're at, we're just Ragsdale, three of you are in a driveway talking about things and then the conversation turns into the streets and public safety. Pretty soon, you're, you're talking city business. And just because you're in the city hall, you've got to be mindful of the fact that, you know, that, that's why I'm sitting here and I'm, you know, policing things and you're used to it, just, you know, you see someone at the same way. And again, you get a, a majority of the members, just be very careful. And again, as we just heard, perception is just as important as the law. This is the new, yeah. Next slide, please. Serial meetings, but you're not all standing together at, at, you know, down at the park for the new basketball court inauguration, serial meetings. And that's where, you know, those kind of two flavors, the huddenspoke, where one person is reaching out to other council members and talking about city business. Or the daisy chain, one called the other and the other called, you know, A call, B call, C call, D call. You've got to, you've got to be careful of that. One of the ways you get trouble there is the reply all. And, you know, that's something you've got to be careful of. This, this comes up, you know, my, my council always is use the city manager. Whether it's agenda setting, I'd like to talk about this, then, then your city manager can post the rest of the council individually without providing feedback to you all. Because after you get into trouble. So that can be a one-way street to your city manager who can then say, you know, this is an issue that a few of them have talked about. That's a, that's an important thing to, to remember. Do you use your city? Next slide. So what is not a meeting? Individual contact? So you, you know, with, with one other, if you have an issue that's before you, you can choose a Brown Act buddy that you're going to talk to about it. But once you do that, remember, you can't reach out to the third and talk about it. Another exception is staff briefings. You know, as long as we don't have three of you in the room together, but we could do two and two and one. And then what's not a meeting where a majority of you meet at conferences and seminars, community meetings, other legislative body meetings, social ceremonial standing committees of the city, as long as you don't talk about city business. So that comes up frequently. There's a, you know, so-and-so's coming to town, you want to give a presentation to the community at large. And, you know, three of you show up. You can do that as long as it doesn't turn into a violation of your self-respect to what's going on. And then grand jury, which is, as you know, the grand jury can subpoena you to, to come in and talk about things. Next slide. The heart of the Brown Act, of course, is our meetings. We have regular meetings, which are, in our case, set by the municipal code, special meetings and emergency meetings. Special meetings are, are targeted to, to, to a few issues. Emergency meetings are, are exactly that, real emergencies, not, oh my gosh, we forgot about this last week. Now, work stoppages, labor strikes, natural disasters, that type of thing. But far between those. And, and the noticing requirement to talk about it in a minute. Teleconferencing, next slide, please. So those of you that have done this for a while, knowing the rules of teleconferencing, the traditional rules, you've got to, the agendas must identify each location. If we have a member participating remotely, must be posted at each teleconference location. Each location must be acceptable to public, public, let's move it to speak at each location. And the majority of members must be in the territorial jurisdiction. The one story I've got here is advising a client one time when one of the council members was in Italy getting here and wanted to participate in an important vote. So in the lobby of the hotel, they do their Brown Act notice there and look around and see if anybody wanted to participate. So that, that's traditional. Again, you've got to have the majority of the members at, in the territorial location. Next slide, please. So COVID and the staff report talks a little bit about this. There are new teleconference rules that started at the beginning of this year. Hold hybrid meetings without having to comply with previous disclosure requirements, such as the postings we just talked about, public participation at each location. But only where a member has just cause or emergency for attending remotely. Just cause includes travel care, illness, disability, or travel in the city business. And emergencies are true, physical and medical emergencies. If the city is to do that, it has to, my, my ubiquitous restrictions apply, lawyer, displayer. There are things that we have to do. It's got to be two-way communication to those that want to participate remotely. And there's, there's a quota restriction with how many times you can use the just cause.
Yeah. Want to learn about the, so what, what the council's talking about is 82449, which was the new laws that were in January 1st. They do not supplant the old laws, they do not replace the old laws, they are inefficient.
That's right. And so we can, we can always fall back on, on the traditional teleconferencing rule. But the biggest thing technologically is providing the two-way, which is, that's another point. Okay, yeah, we can't fall back to the old laws, the old rules. We can build up to the new rules. We don't have the capability to provide any. That's something that we want to do, that's something nice to have and we'll build for. But currently, we don't have the ability to give you all the courtesies. Granted, you underneath the 82449 rules, and you think we've had difficulty just like sharing the last one. So pirate is not an option there. The next slide, please. So with respect to the, to meetings here, I think we're, you are pretty familiar with the notice requirements, 72-hour notice for regular meetings, that would be 24-hour notice. Emergency meetings generally no notice and what our media office requested it. Sometimes a question comes up, for instance, tonight, the letter with respect to the, to the PUC different than what was published in the packet. That's okay, as long as the agenda is posted. Packet material, the documentation can change. And that does happen, the agenda that needs to be posted in advance. The notice has got to, the notice locations has to be posted publicly. City has website, it's got to be posted there as well. The notice content is, you know, the city manager try, trying to track a balance between, you know, having a tentative agenda versus, you know, having more summary description of what's going on in time, place, and a description of the action that takes in, that's it. Whoever's interested in the meeting, look at it and know whether or not they'd like to go over it. Next slide, actually. So notice cutting things not on the agenda. There are some exceptions to that where there's an emergency or two-thirds of the body determines that there's need for immediate action. In the re-pension, the local agency effort was posted, continued items. And I think to spend a second on, on the last one there. And that is sometimes, you know, people will come up in public comment and have a question about, you know, various things aren't on the agenda for that night. And then one council member will say, those matter, that being two, second council member talks about it. Then what happens, we have an issue. But things like directing your city manager to research it, to agendaize it for the future or provide a quick response, that's something that's a lot, that's not on the agenda for that. As long as we don't get into sort of a discussion about it. So next slide, please. Right as the public, public comment. As you know, most of you know, before action is taken, the whole point of public comment is to inform your decision-making and to hear from the public. And that includes, you know, having to suffer through sometimes criticism with action or whatever it may be, maybe not popular, staff, yourself, or, or politics, that, the public right, that meaning. So the, next slide, please, is K law that talks about, you know, is, is three minutes sacred with respect to public comment? No, it's not. I think as long as there's a reasonable opportunity for everyone to be heard, that's okay. We have 15, 20, 30 speakers lined up. This was the discretion of the body to say in two minutes per person, as long as they can do that. I think we all spoke three minutes and it works well there. Keep that in mind. Next slide, please. It's funny, a lot of folks like to come up and tell your name and where they live and how long they've lived. They don't have to. That's something that we, we don't require anything with all skin and cheese. 88 clients, clients is an absolute requirement. I had a situation hypothetical there where all data went out. So we had to pause the meeting and then switch and it came back on. So we have a meeting and say, back four. A record recording meeting, whether that's audio or video, as long as it doesn't disrupt the meeting. I mean, that Brown Act couple sets, okay. A right to all material distributed during the meeting, have the meeting or sort of as impractical afterwards. Again, public interest of disclosure and knowing what the organization's doing, that includes providing copies of things that are handed out at the meeting. Next slide, please. So now we'll talk about the rights of, of you, legislative body. And the, the, the city council can prohibit comment on things that are not within the city's jurisdiction. That there's just nothing to do with that city business if you're prepared. The, the question becomes great when people want to talk about statewide national issues. Do those tie to, to the city? And as long as there's that next, it's, it's, it's very, so this is just more of those. Totally operate. You don't have to take public comment on it. Disruptive comment, disruptive conduct. If a meeting is disrupted and orderly conduct, the meeting is unfeasible and order cannot be restored by removing the disruptor. The legislative body may order the meeting room cleared and continue session. The media can be allowed back in and the legislative body can re-admit those not purposeful disruption. We have legislative tweet to this, in a couple of slides. Next slide, oh, thank you. So this is, I think it's an important one from Government Code section 549, 54.3, where the Brown Act allows legislative body. So in that reasonable regulation governing public participation over need, it shall not prohibit the criticism of the politics procedures program or services of the agency or the act provision of the legislative body. So that's saying, because you get paid a big box to be up here. If folks don't like it, you kind of have to, well. So the next slide is a, is a fact pattern like this was used in sometimes to sort of to illustrate what's going on. This particular one was actually a school district where a teacher dumped garbage on the floor of this meeting and arrested. The court said the arrest was proper. This fellow was warned not to dump garbage and the court couldn't concede because of it. But they, the court was clear to say, look, it wasn't because of what was said. It was a physical disruption and the disruption means actual disruption. And the impairment of you folks to conduct the public. Next slide, please. So this is sort of a, becoming more and more of a central cases in the case that, that triggered a legislative response, which was, the need of Acosta was addressing the coast and the city council. And he asked the audience to silently stand if they agreed with statement. The mayor said, no, we're not doing that. Facing the audience, Mr. Acosta then said, do it. Three times and 20 or 30 people stood and clapped. The mayor called for a recess, cutting Mr. Acosta's short. The police approached Mr. Acosta, stating that his time was up, moved the microphone and asked him to leave the chamber. They told him he wasn't under arrest and was told to leave the council chambers to diffuse the situation. Mr. Acosta was accused and made it difficult for the officers to remove him. And then went outside of the city council chambers, he wrapped his legs around the pole, arms and legs around the pole, an officer fell over and Mr. Acosta was then arrested. He brought a lawsuit against the city, fighting 11 calls of action. The jury decided the material question, the conduct was disruptive. And the court held that Mr. Acosta's conduct, not his word, which included profanity and swearing at the mayor, supported the determination that he's substantially disruptive and needing facility food. He addressed the audience and urged them to stand and unplanned recess was needed to diffuse the destructive conduct, inability to continue a meeting based on, on what's going on, not just, just harsh words. Next slide, I didn't even say it, you're really right on it. Legislative response. And that is, there's a new government code section that talks about, about, sort of, I would advise, you know, the three steps, a warning, second warning, if it happens again, you'll be moved in, and then removal. Sort of talks about the Brown Act before it talked about groups of people or groups disrupting and clearing out the room. The legislative response to Acosta was that a person can be removed if the, if the parliamentarian, the person presiding, here would be the mayor. He finds the person's disrupting the meeting, you've got some definition here, all data reading. Provides fair warning, A, if that continues, we can't conduct business. If that continues, you'll have to be removed and then have the disruptive. And then after the, the disruptive conduct continues, that person turned in. And then they were moved, so that's the legislative response, and it just gives the council a tool for the, uh, primary. Uh, next slide, closed session, when we tell the public we're going in, close session, we close all the doors and. And, uh, we go in close session, it's actually very limited what can be discussed. It's limited to pending litigation, personnel matters, compensation, salaries, labor negotiations, real property negotiations. Security threats and, and, and public safety, so, uh, very narrow scope. Um, the confidentiality that comes out of that, um, and, and that is that. The member, members of the legislative body may not disclose confidential information prior to a closed session. Uh, those that do can be referred to by a jury, only the, only the entire council can weigh confidentiality. So there's no right for any to do this kind of happening in a closed session, coupled by the. And the next slide, two. Uh, Brown Act enforcement can be prosecuted criminally or civilly, um, usually a political detractor that. That file these things, um, occasionally engage in swing of things and they'll look into it sometimes file from that not file. Um, there are some exceptions, there is a little bit of wiggle room, next slide, please. With respect to, to the Brown Act, I think the legislature recognizes that people are human, there's new council member. Uh, substantial compliance with the Brown Act, you know, it's a minor thing, um, it's, I mean, prosecute some things. Um, and then the legislative body, there is a Brown Act violation, have the, a do-over option, since if they get a complaint within thirty days, they can, they can. Uh, cure and correct, AKA do over the action, uh. The next slide please, best practices are your eighty-two-four-four training, you're required to do every two years, review the Brown Act. Always be free to be called a question, um, city manager has done this for a long time, well, though. May have the answer, but please, we can talk about even how to head these things early and often, um, and, and, uh. You know, area on the side, really again, perception is just as important along with other things. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions to the depth of my ability.
Thank you, yes, one, one thing before we move on. Um, so you've seen that there's some updates to the Brown Act law and, uh, there are some sections of our code and. Specific to the city council, section two, final four, uh, that are a little update. And aren't necessarily conflict with new Brown Act law, but also don't really jive with it, so in the next month or two, we'll be coming back. Uh, with revisions and amendments to that section of the code, since we're addressing that section of code, the code. We're going to put here and clean up some of the other language, where we have references to he. Uh, things like that, where we can modernize the code, so as we move forward and we find things like this in the code, we'll be very clear to. Going forward, that this will be one of the first ones, we'll bring it more up to date, the current Brown Act rules.
Okay, thank you. So questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, um, just a quick one, uh, we talked about, uh, free speech for the public, is there any protected? There's protected classes, race, color, sexual orientation, religion, are those still protected? If somebody gets up and makes a disparaging comment, or is making disparaging comments about someone's color, race. Creed, sexual orientation during a meeting?
I'm not aware that there's, that there's any prohibition, as this says, well, it is, it is the public right to do that. Now, that being said, uh, as a private civil matter, I would expect that there would be, you know, typically. The panatory standards in nature, there may be something there, um, but the public's right to speak is, is. Pretty broad and again, destruction is, is actual destruction.
So I understand we're under the Brown Acts, the original, uh, new legislation, um, so if. Uh, if I am in another location, right, so my location needs to be noted on the agenda. How far advanced do I have in those studies and then in my location? Does that, do I also have to post that seventy-two hours in advance?
The, I don't believe so. I'm not a hundred percent, but I don't believe that you have to go and put it on your front door seventy-two hours in advance, I think it just. But there, your location will be posted on the agenda that's distributed.
Right.
Where, where you will be, so I think what you do then is just take a paper copy of what it is, you put it outside, but I don't know that it's specific.
Okay, and, um, would I be able to zoom in? Or do I have to call it?
I believe you'd be able to zoom in, yeah. Well, tech, if, if, if the technology would allow it legally, yes, but I understand technology.
Right.
Okay, okay, um, I, I guess I would like us to, I mean, this is the opportunity to discuss. But I, I would like us to move closer to eighty-two-four-four-nine, um, and be able to, to do hybrid meetings, so maybe. I know there's certain questions, I'll, I'll leave that for now, that was my wish.
Okay, question number.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson, one curiosity, uh, Brown Act covers, um. Noticeable guidelines, seventy-two hours, twenty-four hours for emergencies, regular meeting. Are there any, uh, guidelines for cancellations, or is that more so a city policy or? Are there at all, is it possible to show something, it's not happening?
Yeah, the courtesy, you, you know, if you can't get the notice out, you can, but you know, sometimes it's circumstances such that you just don't get a form of meeting. And so that would be helpful, and I think that the courtesy there is, if, if you can let people know how to post it on the door.
So it's too much, the city will do their best and we follow that. Yeah, right, now, also in the last section, uh, you mentioned, uh, the. Brown Act, sort of a brief overview of, uh, violations. Uh, I've seen what happened before at this level in this city, uh, sincerely hope that don't happen again. Uh, sometimes apparently they may, uh, sometimes intentionally. Um, so my opinion is that there are varying levels, um. That constitute the need for a cure or greater amount of enforcement. Could you expand on that just a bit, and then a part two of that is, what would a cure at our council, excuse me, at our council level? Appear as, what would that constitute, just, uh, an acknowledgement, can that happen, or is there, um. Is there formal acknowledgements and, um. I'm certain it's, and I, it's a, uh, acknowledgement. And typically, um, earnest effort, uh, now to create any repetition. So that it might be seen as.
The council always retains the discretion to, to, to take the position that it wasn't a problem. Uh, so it, it's not necessarily a review, if the council takes action on something and it turns out that there was. Inadvertent Brown Act violation, then it's a review. And so that either that, that comes back and maybe it's a summary of the previous, um, presentation. But it essentially, it's a do-over action. With respect to severity, I think it matters, uh, it, it's always factually intensive, each one, um, certainly in my experience, uh, D A. Or, or civil matters, um, you know, the level of violation or the degree area of violation. Um, I think intentionality is a big part, so if, if folks are in, intentionally avoiding the Brown Act. I think there's a misdemeanor there and D A would be much more interested in inadvertent. Hey, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, uh, Alex, for the, uh, enlightening on the Brown Act. And I just have, uh, one, some question regarding, uh. Like, uh, was there any instance that the Brown Act was challenged in the, in, 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 you know?
Not that I'm aware of, it's based on the Freedom of Information Act, uh, the, the, uh, right, it, it has a state in parallel as well, and. Um, so, certainly some of the, um. Provisions have been litigated, but as the body of laws, I don't know that it's been challenged on the court.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, what I'd like to do now is take that to the public, any public comment? Yeah, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, no action needs to be taken, but any final thoughts? From any of the council members?
Yeah, I, I do think that the council, um, I'm curious to know how my, oh, council members feel about moving towards. Eighty-two-four-four-nine, um, obviously we're still in COVID, we still get sick occasionally and, um. You know, uh, sometimes I don't want to get other people sick, if I'm sick and, you know, don't, maybe I. I can't come, but I would like to still participate in the meeting. And I realize I can, I could call, um, and then, you know, let them know I'm at home, then they come and come over. Um, but I, I just feel like, you know, the debate has, has brought about this new legislation. Um, I would just like to explore what it would cost to, to move, I, I think we should always. Be open to greater transparency and greater participation, and that would include people being able to be online. And make a comment, and so I'd be interested in asking staff if they can explore what that would cost. What that would entail, um, and I mean, I know obviously lots of other jurisdictions are, are doing it. Um, I know we're small, but I, I'd just like to know what it would, what it would take to get to that place where we could utilize eighty-two-four-four-nine.
Just a footnote to that, that might be something that staff will get and see if that we can use some of that one kind of. Well, we've got react, I mean, what we have sitting there and, and we've all kind of debated what it would be for this area, that might be something. Would be a good investment in the city, because it, it's obvious, I'm just looking at the audience compared to what we used to get. When we were on Zoom meetings, thirty, forty people at the back, that would seem like it brings a lot more involvement. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson, I, I think I'd just like to say in closing, uh, in reference to the Brown Act, um. For those members of the public that are here, and you know that are on Zoom, we're seeing it's mostly us. But some of our neighbors have been just stating for the record, um, I'd like the public to know that, uh. Uh, thank you, Alex, you've heard this presentation many, many times over the years, uh, at this level. And, uh, from the planning commission, thank you for your, uh, your presentations to us and the public. I'd like the public to know that, uh, we also, as your, um. Elected seat leaders are required to attend a planning commissioners academy and or a, uh, mayor and. New city, new mayor, new state council members academy, at which time we are offered and required by the state to take. Uh, eighty-one, two, three, four, ethics training, which includes an overview of Brown Act. Uh, not only that, it's offered to us from assuming office, uh, we take a minimum of two hour course online and are certified accordingly. And therefore, there is, uh, no, uh, no missed opportunity for any member of, uh, your local governments. To not be completely familiarized with, uh, the subjects covered here in the Brown Act specifically, and ethics, uh, training in general. And, uh. Sorry if I speak before your place of bad address, I should, uh, consistent with our code of conduct, must state that these opinions are. Expressing my own and do not reflect that, um.
Okay, council member.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Cardi Lurka, uh, for, for the Brown Act, uh, like. Refreshion and also the, the additional, uh, laws that, uh, implemented this year and. And, and thinking about, uh, things where, uh, all of us are really in different circumstances and, uh. And, uh, some of us are still afraid to even come to public meetings and if we can, uh, look at options. Uh, that we can do, provide more access, uh, for our, our residents. To be able to participate here, our custom meeting, I'm all for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so, uh, I'm hearing from the majority of the council that. We would like to move towards eighty-four-four, uh, two-four-four-nine, um, so. Uh, maybe staff pulling together, uh, visibility, cost type analysis. Is that kind of what we're looking for here? And any other specifics beyond that timeline, okay? Any other? Requirements or guidance regarding that?
Other options, like, uh, probably the more, uh, the cheaper way, you know, how to implement this. So the more efficient, effective way to implement, uh, if we, if we're likely to have a full-time. Officer level, I P staff, or if we can hire an intern who is really in the I P department. In our nearby, uh, universities here, so, uh, that would be good, let's look at, so, uh. If we can have those options, uh, that we can see, that would be great.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so I know the city manager has, has got that, and so we'll just wait and hear back from staff on. Those, uh, issues that we just discussed, okay? All right, no action required, so I'll move on to item. Ten A, which is the council reports, they are in the packet, but for city manager report, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, uh, so just a few things, um, as we're coming out of COVID and actually having in-person meetings and. Feeling a greater sense of community again, and. City managers are getting together at lunch once a month and talking about issues now, and we could actually talk about them that. Didn't really work well in, in Zoom meetings and kind of, you know, collaborate a little bit better on what's going on. The other community meeting, getting out, uh, and actually talking to some of our partner agencies and. Uh, so there's been a focus over the last month or so, Rick and I have been focusing a lot on, uh, kind of broadening our collabora. Collaboration and partnership with sister agencies, um, so a few examples of that is, you know, last, last month, you all approved a. Uh, an agreement to do work with E E A, uh, and for them to reimburse that for work, for working with them. Um, it, it, it's an issue that's not going away in our community, even in Little Delrayos. Uh, we're not immune to the problems associated with fentanyl and other issues that we've learned. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we did that frequently, um, and then that's when we started to collaborate in the P A, so that's when we started to work well. Uh, also, I, I think you all need to understand where your police department is here. Our police department is functioning so well and it's become so respected around Peninsula. That, uh, our sister agencies, our bigger sister agencies, uh, who are having a little bit of a hiring crisis. And are understaffed, are reaching out to Delrayos for help. And so our staff is able to provide backup services for them. Uh, but more importantly, they're reaching out to us for our technical expertise. And so we've actually been able to send offers over to, uh, other cities to, uh, help them with drafting warrants. Uh, and help them with investigations, and, uh, so those are the things that, that the training that Chris and Jeff have been implementing. Uh, in the department is giving our, actually lower level staff than what they have in other cities. A higher level of training and expertise that they're not having, so, uh, thank you, Chris, for that. Um, some other things to, you know, the Air Force, uh, has reached out to us. Uh, to assist them with, uh, a range data qualifications on the range, so Chris Albeck is also one of our reserve officers. But also, uh, one of our residents here, um, is going to work with them, he's our range master. And he's actually going to donate his time to, uh, to help him out, so, uh, again, building those partnerships and, and collaboration. Uh, that goes both ways, you all know, especially those of you involved with CAG. Our military relationship with base and with our military personnel, uh, has been very good. And they, they're really good at volunteering and helping us with our community, uh, events and everything. And they've actually reached out to us, uh, one of the, one of the members, uh, from the D L I. Who, uh, was volunteering at the Santa's workshop, actually said that she and some of her, her partners in the military. Were noticing that town hall hadn't been cleaned in a while, and they wanted to know if they could volunteer and come down and do a cleaning day. At all, so Ron and Karen, you'll be working with them to schedule that, and any of you who'd like to get out and. I can share a little elbow grease with your military partners, that would be awesome, so we'll put that out to everybody. Um, and then, uh, the mayor and I, with our P G and E, uh, will. Um, and then, uh, the mayor and I met with our PG&E, uh, local government representative this week. Uh, just established that relationship and, uh, talked to her about how we could do better communication on PG&E issues. And, uh, you know, anything that we have, we'll ease it behind, it's not technically in our city, but we have, it's involved a lot of our residents back up to that evening. Uh, so she's aware of the issue that we have back there. Uh, the mayor talked with her a lot about some of the things that he's heard. Uh, doesn't hurt that he lives back there as well. So, so she, she's on it. Uh, so that's good, starting those communications. Um, also I've been talking with the city of San City and I've heard with a few of you. Uh, we may have some opportunities for a similar type of agreement that we have at the airport and sharing uh, resources with our police department. Uh, San City, the new city manager there is open to discussing with me uh, opportunities for sharing, uh, staffing, some maybe IT staffing, but also HR staffing and finance staffing. Uh, as neither city really had a full-time need for some other functions, but maybe we can get a full-time, very experienced person to work in there. For work. Uh, Ron has been working closely, as you said, uh, mayor, he's now had a grant. Right. Person to his, his list, his very long resume of accomplishments. Uh, he's also working with Cal AM and coordinating with them and getting Cal AM landscape uh, grant with them to, uh, beautify some of our landscaping down the park up here, city halls, some of our uh, uh, city islands. Uh, the focus on that is to transition to more drought resistant water, uh, less water intensive, uh, uses. And Cal AM wants to part with us on paying the cost for that. And then, you know, they get the better, lower water. Um, and then with our insurance group, we're working with them on addressing some pure hazards uh, throughout the city. We've got a ten thousand dollar grant from our insurance group, uh, to address trip hazards. So we're on, we're on identifying those. Uh, and then obviously anybody bitten out of the park, we've seen that the improvements continue down there. The basketball court is done. Um, but the rims are, rims are up. Everybody's playing. Uh, the only thing that's outstanding is the fence. Uh, so we're working with Mr. Sanchez on scheduling that, the weather, uh, and so I'm a little anxious about that. Uh, and you probably all knows it's a little muddy down there. Uh, but when we put in the concrete, put in, they moved basketball court. That, that took a lot of turf out of there. So, uh, Ron has the plans for re-sanding the area. But again, nobody anticipated this kind of rain. So we're waiting probably, uh, April to May, but April we'll, we'll be able to sign weather permitting. Uh, and then we'll have a beautiful park again. Um, and then obviously, it's pretty peaty and, oh, it's heavy report, but uh, storm response, you've all probably noticed it as you're around the peninsula. Um, no one intended, but we've weathered all of these storms better than our sister agencies. Uh, and that all is all down to the product and nature, nature of our programs, specifically Ron. Um, staying on top of, uh, tree trees and looking for any potential hazards. Uh, ironically, I had a conference call with FEMA after, you know, at, towards the end of December, when the storm was really bad, when they were telling us we were going to be an island. And they were asking, uh, what are, you know, what are our needs? Can they help us? And I had, I had someone that said, I, I, I think you're wasting your time with us because we've actually come out of the storm better than we went into it. And what I mean by that is you all know that for fifteen years, since we've had ownership of South Bounder Road, twenty years, every time it rained, we had to close South Bounder Road because it flooded. Uh, Ron found a problem and fixed the problem. And it doesn't flood anymore. And that was because of the flooding being bad this year and going out and checking this out and figuring out what's going on. He was able to fix the problem. And so we actually are better now than we were beginning of December. So, um, so anyway, so that's some of the stuff we're trying to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And city manager. Um, I'll move on to item number eleven, which is correspondence. It's located in the packet. Next item is closed session, number twelve. We have two items to discuss during closed session. One is existing litigation in California Native Plant Society and the Forward Reuse Authority. And the second is existing litigation, Christopher Lawson versus the city of Delray Oaks. But before we adjourn to closed session, um, anyone wishing to address the city council on any of those items, please do so now. Uh, there would be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker and no action will be taken on matters brought up under this public comment period. So any public comment regarding closed session items. Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session.
Okay, we're recording, but I just don't see anything right now. Go ahead. Oh, yeah, the owl, owl died.
Okay, we're reconvening from closed session of the night call.
I was here.
Now. Okay, I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to both items in closed session, uh, regarding existing litigation, an update was provided to council and direction was given to staff, but no report of action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March twenty eighth at six PM. This meeting is adjourned.